Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call roll, please?
Counselor Lawless?
Here.
Counselor Furlo?
Here.
Counselor Rissel?
Here.
Counselor Reskan?
Here.
And Counselor Sander?
Here.
Counselor Sallers?
Thank you. Approval of council minutes, March 13th and 20th, regular session, and March 27th, work session minutes.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the council minutes from March 13th, 20th, and 27th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. Consent calendar. We have the Lebanon City Council agenda for tonight. The Arts Commission from January 28, 2019. Ralston Park Improvement Plan Ad Hoc Committee, January 31st, February 28, 2019. Trees and Trails Committee, January 16th. And we have an addition is Shaggy's Den Smoke Shop Liquor License at 455 Wellwood Drive.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar is approved. Next up, we have proclamations. And I'm gonna go through a few proclamations here. Arbor Day, April 26, 2019 proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed through the nation and world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper and wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I Mayor Paul R. Aziz do hereby proclaim April 26 as Arbor Day in the City of Lebanon. I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations. Next up is May 2019 Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas promotion and prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives. And whereas each of us has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Lebanon, and call upon the community to commit increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps we can take to protect our mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for those in need. And I have a certificate to give. And there's a signed proclamation for you. All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you to all you guys.
And would you announce who you are and what you do?
I'm Dick Knowles. I'm the Chair of the Mental Health Advisory Board for Lynn County.
And thanks for all you're doing for our community.
Yeah, you guys do a very good job.
Thank you. Okay, next up is City of Lebanon Older Americans Month. Proclamation. Whereas older Americans enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas Lebanon is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers. And whereas the city acknowledges the importance of taking part in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being, no matter your age. And whereas we can enrich the lives of individuals of every age by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community planning events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, I hereby proclaim May 2019 as Older Americans Month. I urge our citizens to take time to acknowledge our older adults and the people who serve them as a vital part of our community. Is Kendra here? In your seat? Nope. City of Lebanon National Volunteer Week proclamation. This one's an important one, I think, because of we have so many volunteers in Lebanon, and it makes our community work. Without the volunteers, I don't know what we would be. But it makes Lebanon who we are. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that change the world. And whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change discovering their power to make a difference. And whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed, and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. Whereas the experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all our nation's social problems. And whereas our country's volunteer force of more than 63 million is a great treasure and are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore, I Mayor Paul R. Aziz hereby proclaim April 7th through the 13th, 2019, as Volunteer Week in Lebanon, and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can come together and make a difference. Okay, next up is public comments. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Did I miss that? And we will get back to the audit presentation after this. I jumped ahead. No, it's okay. Go ahead.
I already hear you. You may as well do it.
Yeah, we did.
There we go. Perfect. Okay, so just checking really quickly, on behalf of Live Longer Lebanon, hello, council. Has everybody heard about the Digital Safety Summit coming up on April 22nd? Got about 50%. Beautiful. For those who aren't aware, Live Longer Lebanon, the group that kinda took over after the Blue Zones Initiative was passed on, has been working on a variety of things. One of them is our Digital Safety Summit coming up again on April 22nd, which is a Monday, at the Boys and Girls Club at 6:00. And what we wanted to do is we had heard reports of ways that seemingly benign entertainment and apps and websites and things like that had been twisted. For instance, Fortnite, a really popular multiplayer video game, the chat rooms have led to a lot of online bullying, even some extortion, and in a couple of cases, suicide. The Musically app, which is, I think, now called TikTok, that's another one that has been abused by people using hashtags to lead to, like, suicide tips. They've convinced minors to go on and do, like, stripping kind of dances, because it's like a live-streaming lip-syncing thing. And there are a lot of things that kids can get into online that seem perfectly safe because parents aren't aware of all the different options and features and how to keep track of it. So we were lucky enough to partner up with the FBI, the Portland Division of the FBI, and they're going to be coming to the Boys and Girls Club on April 22nd to lead us through a summit on what you need to be watching out for, tips and tricks for keeping up on everything, how to balance tech and tech access into your child's life in a very healthy way. And we're also going to have, I think, 20 resource tables from different kids' programs, extracurriculars, family resources, such as hand-in-hand farms. Lynn County council governments with their walk-and-bike-to-school program is going to be there. The bowling alley's going to be, all kinds of stuff for kids to do that's healthy and doesn't involve a computer. And then again, the presentation from the FBI on how parents can be aware and stay up to date. It's completely free, completely free. We do request that people register on the Eventbrite, so we can kind of have a good guess on how many are coming. There's chili. It is vegan chili, but there's free chili. And there's cornbread, and I'm told that's not vegan, so I'm very excited about that. And there's gonna be a lot of good information to help people just keep track, because it's tough to keep up with all the apps and everything that they do. And I don't want to play the arms race with my teenagers. This is a great way to just get up to date on what you need to know. So, thank you, council, for your time.
Thank you. I put it on my calendar, and I'll be there.
Vegan chili.
Yeah.
Live Longer Lebanon, it's doing the whole fruits and veggies thing, and I wasn't consulted. The cornbread is not vegan.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna stop the, and we'll continue those in a few minutes, but I skipped the presentation by our CPA, Steve Tishner. So if you would come on up, I apologize for skipping over that. I was reading all those proclamations and just got carried away.
I just know how exciting this is, and you just wanted to bypass it.
Well, there is that.
Let's see. Well, first of all, I know you guys just got that, so I think the agenda's gonna change so that you don't actually accept the audit report tonight, and that's fine by me, so I just want to be here to answer any questions you have. And initially, just address the whole issue of the timing and what took so long this year. And all I can tell you is it's been a rough year in a lot of different ways. Matt, your new finance director, has done a phenomenal job of really working through some of the very difficult issues. And to kind of give you some sense of how things have gotten more difficult, I brought my Gatsby codification manuals. And this one's from 2010, okay? And it's so 1,100 pages of some of the finest reading you will ever have available to you. This is the 2018 version, along with this. And so, part of what we're up against is massive amounts of change that adds a lot of complexity to what's inside of this. And so, that's my best excuse for what took so long. It's also a pretty great demonstration, isn't it? Anybody that would like to borrow this? It's available. You can, lending library, I have my own. You can just take it with you. I need it back by June, that's all. No, it's, it has added a lot of work to what we do. And the complexity of that has added a lot of work to what ultimately goes into here, much of which has nothing to do with what you guys mostly focus on, which is budgetary stuff. When we get to the full accrual financial statements, otherwise known as the government-wide financial statements, and also the proprietary fund financial statements, we start bringing in all of your capital assets that are owned by the city, the long-term debt that's not necessarily part of the budgetary experience. The payment of that debt is part of your budget, but not the balance of those liabilities. And the same with the capital assets. You budget for the acquisition of those assets, but not the accounting, the full value of those, or the depreciation of those. And so, and the more complex things that really caused this thing to blow up here have to do with pension liabilities and the new thing called OPEB liabilities. And without getting into a great amount of detail, I think pension liabilities are fairly clear. It's the unfunded amount of what is predicted to be owed on the PERS liability. OPEB liabilities. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And it is a number of different liabilities that are created as a result of having employees. The most significant, or, yeah, the most significant one generally is this notion of something called the implicit rate subsidy liability. And that ultimately has to do with the fact that Oregon requires every local government to allow retired employees to continue to buy health insurance through the local government's health insurance plan. Because of that, and because older people tend to file more health insurance claims, the overall cost of insurance because of those claims goes up for the city across the board. And the retired employee presumably gets that at a subsidized rate, because if they were to go out into the open market, they would pay more. So the calculated, actuarially calculated accumulating liability over the years of employees earning that right is this implicit rate subsidy liability. Got all that?
How many employees do we have in that category?
Well, every employee that's an employee, every full-time employee, every part-time employee that's already receiving the health insurance benefit is eligible to continue.
I know they're eligible. How many are using it?
How many are using it? Good question. I don't know the answer to that right off the top of my head.
Matt, did you?
Probably four or five.
It's pretty limited. And that is taken into account. There are, there's a simplified method for doing the calculation, which you guys used this year. There are also actuarials that do that and nothing but that. Company that does the actuarial calculations for PERS liability, it's Milliman &amp; Company, does that for an awful lot of the local governments, that actuarial calculation for OPEB. So the variables that go into that are the number of employees, the number of years they've worked, their ages, what their wages are, what the premiums are predicted to be in the future, how many of them actually use that benefit. A good example of how extreme it can be is that fire districts, whose employees generally can retire at 50, end up with a fairly large liability there because they have 15 years before they're required to get off of that and take, and use Medicare. Cities that have police departments and fire departments have a fairly large liability that way. You guys just have the police department, so it's not as extreme. But the calculation is complicated, to say the least. And so, and again, that's a huge part of what's caused this gigantic thing. So that gives you some idea how messy it is. But, but, you know, not to dwell on that a whole lot, because it's a relatively small part of the overall picture here. But I want to tell you two things. I want to tell you, first of all, that the audit went well. There are some prior period adjustments that we went back and worked on getting numbers corrected. The biggest numbers have to do with the value of your capital assets, which is an estimate at the very best. And the reason it's an estimate is because of several things. Number one, there was no requirement to maintain valuations of capital assets prior to 2000, the year 2000, 2001. So an awful lot of assets that are out there, owned by local governments, including pipes in the ground, all your water and sewer delivery systems and all that, streets, buildings, a lot of those were acquired well before 2000. So the rule is that we have to put a value on them, an estimated historical cost. So that's a great big estimate number. Some of the complications that happen with that, in terms of cities especially, is when an urban renewal district may pay for that asset, but it ends up being owned by...
Why don't you hold on just one second? We'll let that pass by.
The rumble. Well, that wasn't too bad. Yeah. Anyway, the capital assets is an estimate because of the historical cost consideration. Depreciation is also another large amount of the estimated valuation. And depreciation is, if nothing else, an estimate of how long an asset's going to last and how you should expense out the value, the cost of that asset. So the complications there are many. And Matt went through the list of, like, 4,000 assets that you guys have on the books, and moved some things around, noticed that there were some things missing. We worked with him to get those adjustments made, and that's a big part of what you'll see, some prior period adjustments in there. Matt's also been working diligently to get some of the accounting systems improved, some of the things like assessments that you guys have, whether it's SDC assessments or other, or SDC charges or other assessments, where there has been an agreement for the entity that owes those to actually pay it out over time. So you guys have some receivables on the books. And some of that had not been done very well in the past, and that is now a much, much better system of accounting that's going on. There've been a number of other things, and he's got his hands full to really get things super cleaned up. Nothing material that was necessarily problematic in the past, but certainly a better systems overall. And I applaud him for that. He's working hard to get things really tidied up and functioning much better. And that's certainly ultimately slowed down the delivery of this report. There are, you'll also notice, in the past, this report combined most of your funds into about four funds. And now you have something like 80 funds that show up in this report. The compliance, again, going back to these books here, what's technically correct in terms of how you report budgets or funds on a budgetary basis is not 100% clear, and Oregon budget law complicates that. In the past, there was a sense that all those funds should just be merged together into one. You're gonna see in your, well, you did last year, your appropriation resolutions identified each of the funds, and because of that, it was decided between Matt and myself that all those funds should be reported in here separately. There is a general rule about governmental accounting that says that you, a government should only create the minimum number of funds necessary to operate in a good way. And I think over the years, this city has created an awful lot of funds that could and maybe should be merged into fewer funds. So that conversation is one I would certainly encourage you guys to consider in the coming budget year and in the future budget years, as you start to look at how the budget and the city is managed in fund accounting. But adding all of those to this report also added a tidy sum of work to get that done. And trying to get what was merged balances to be separated out and be appropriately reported was a bit of a challenge as well. But what I can tell you is, when you look at this, you can rely on these numbers to be without material misstatement. That means that if you're looking at and trying to make decisions, you can rely on these numbers to help you make good decisions. Doesn't mean that this report is perfect, but it's, we did darn, our darndest to get it better than it has been in the past. And if you tend to feel that there's still some warmth to that report, it's because it was just hot off the press this afternoon. So we were working right up to the last minute to get this thing as good as it could be.
Question? Robert?
Considering the new requirements that you've just demonstrated, are there adjustments to our policies and procedures that you would recommend?
There are always some adjustments to policies and procedures that can help. I don't have any specifically that I would recommend, but I'm available to work with you and with Matt anytime you want to make improvements. Matt and I were just sitting back there talking about some of the budget requirements. If you look at the very last page of this report, you'll see three items that indicate that there were some budget compliance issues. And budget compliance is, at this point with Oregon, one of the worst stated, clearly-stated set of requirements that could possibly be adopted. 2013, 14, in that range, Oregon Department of Revenue decided to rewrite the code, the budget code, Oregon budget law code. And what they have not yet done is written a new budget manual. And so if you go to the Oregon State website and click on the Oregon Budget Manual, you're gonna see a manual from 2012, which is no longer...
Shocking, shocking.
Isn't it, though? I know.
But overall, your impression of our situation as compared to other municipalities that you work with?
Well, you know, one of the things that I don't necessarily do is comparable with, I know, everybody wants that. I guess for an extra couple million dollars, I'd be happy to. The city's in good financial shape. You guys have plenty of cash. You have great accounting systems, generally speaking. Everything's functioning well. You're refinancing some of the debt to save some money. That's a great thing to do right now. The city has a lot of debt, but so do most cities of this size. And it's how you get things done in a timely manner, you know, when you're... And it's always a juggling act. I was at a city council meeting the other day that people were just abhorred that there was any money in the coffers at all that should be spent right away. And that's a policy thing, but generally, it's a good idea. If you run your family that way, you're gonna be in trouble about every 30th of the month, you know? And it's not a good way to run a government either, in my opinion. But the city's in good financial shape, that much I can tell you. And from a standpoint of...
I'm gonna let that, I'm gonna let it go.
Okay.
I'm gonna let it slide. I'm okay.
I have a question. When you talk about historical values, and you're looking at, let's say, 50-year-old pipe that's been in the ground versus 10-year, how do you, how do you go about?
Well, the 10-year-old pipe, we know what it costs to put it in the ground, because now that's within the range of when we had to do that. Going back in time, depending on what the effort was back in 2000, 2001, to try and get in compliance with the new requirements, there were some places, and I think Lebanon was one, that was keeping track of those assets back then anyway. was one, that was keeping track of those assets back then anyway. But ultimately, it's been a very difficult thing for most governments to really take seriously. And you have to really look at it in terms of two things. Number one, being in compliance with what's required for financial reporting. Number two, what is the, is there a value to spending money to go back and try and recreate those lists and costs and all that? Forty years from now, it'd be a heck of a lot easier because most of the estimated stuff will be gone. But it's a difficult task, let's just be honest about it. Infrastructure, streets, all those kinds of things that constitute infrastructure that you can actually look at and see what kind of condition it's in, there's a whole big, huge method of determining what the overall value is and how much of that value should be reassessed. There are two basic methods that are used and the alternate method is one that most everybody uses because the real method is go out and count the number of cracks on the streets and, no kidding, I mean, it's just like that. Pay somebody to go out and put a value on that stuff. And I don't, I mean, I know that there are street departments that go out there and, you know, assess the streets and which ones should get slurry seals and blah, blah, blah. But putting a dollar amount on that is just not something that most places are willing to do and understandably so. So...
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks for the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move back to the public comment section and see if there's anyone else that would like to address council.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi.
Sorry, does it come across?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yvette Meyer with the Lebanon Downtown Association.
And I'm Cassie Cruz with the Downtown Association.
Wyatt King, also with the Lebanon Downtown Association.
We have a couple of board members in the audience too. So we're here tonight to give you an update of what we've been doing the last few months. So Cassie's gonna start it off.
Yeah, and actually, I just wanna apologize. You haven't seen this face for the last couple of months. I think I had expressed at the first council meeting that the first few months, three months, would be kind of, I would be spending more of my time having to focus on studies and then I'd probably be more, I'd be ramped up after the first term, which I am, which is nice. So I just wanna apologize that you had not seen me, but I am here today and I will be here from there on forward. So what you have in your hands there is where Lebanon has currently gone with their investment that the city has given us of $10,000. I've been aware of all the work that had been done, just as a resident, but what, putting this together, I was quite impressed to see the work that the Downtown Association had done over the last year underneath DeLa's guidance and Alicia being a Main Street manager. They were able to bring in hard cash, over $27,000 within that investment, being over a $52,000 investment if you were to include the volunteer hours as well, which I think is phenomenal at a 19-hour work week. Alicia did a phenomenal job and of course, that wouldn't be without the backing of a great board too. But I also wanna speak to what our future looks like. I'll be honest, Cassie, at 10 hours a week, I leave little to wonder, I'll be honest. It is difficult to manage position at 10 hours a week. And I feel my fear is that the LDA will be less effective if I continue on this path. Because future, right now, what it's looking like for us is we're wanting to obtain more grants through different organizations, even the Main Street program, one we should be hearing back from is, it's not in here, but is a $200,000 grant to the revitalization, Oregon revitalization grant that's gonna be coming for the hotel that will give LDA about $5,000 just for the admin fees to go with that. So bring more monies in and then help our downtown and create living space, which we need to keep going. And another grant through, would be through Pacific Power to be able to work alongside the city in collaboration to get lighting downtown that we can have to, just to make it more vibrant for us as community members. So we have lots of opportunities and there, as I said, to be able to work with our event center. When I was in hotels, lots of opportunity comes in from having the events. I think almost everyone around this table knows how many people, their particular event, whether it be comps or fire departments, how many people come in from out of the area and to be able to highlight our community, to be able to work with merchants, to welcome people to, you know, if we are the town that friendliness built, then our welcoming to those people should be just to that. But right now, unfortunately, with 10 hours, I'm not capable of making those rounds. I'm not capable of getting those things accomplished. Alicia, what she was able to do was able to sustain our current events and start some new ones. I like to see that grow. Being previous in sales, growth is fun for me. I enjoy it. I want to see it to continue on. So where we're going towards also is looking for, as I mentioned there, is taking over another event. Summer Bands and Brews, which started out as a conversion-led event for the community, they asked us to pick up the torch for them because there's a lot more you can do as a nonprofit than you can if you're a for-profit and they really want to make that for the community because of Strawberry Plaza being right there and everyone that impact. So we were excited when they offered that partnership to us. I think I may have said yes before they spoke and then everyone told me to calm down. So I just wanted to speak to that and then also just kinda, you have there our accomplishments to what we've accomplished throughout the year as far as First Fridays being a first-time event, being able to bring on the Jingle Bell Run, which we're hoping to grow. So as I said, these things here, they're gonna take time and effort and time is the investment that is needed from myself and from my board, which has been highly involved well before me and I appreciate each and every one of them. But I really wanna draw here also to see how many volunteer money we've saved the city of Lebanon in volunteer hours. Just over $24,000 was towards volunteer hours, which saved businesses, which saved the city, which saved a lot of people, a lot of money that they would've had to spend that we were able to be able to make up with the events that we have throughout the year. And then to kinda give, just notice to the Main Street Salary Survey that Main Street had done, there's two different tiers of performing, which they're at the top there and then transforming, which Lebanon is currently falling underneath. When you look at what other cities or even like the Alberta District is accomplishing, it's because they have the investment of the community behind them. It's because they have either events that are able to bring enough funds to support the organization because they've built them to that level or it's because their city has just supported them to that great, that capacity. One that I had, particularly had caught my eye...
Can you wrap, start wrapping down?
Yes, 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 yes. Sorry, I have five minutes. We all know I like to talk. So anyways, so I just want you guys to look at that and to see that these things would not be able to be possible if it wasn't for the investment of the community.
That is true and with that investment from the community, we're looking with our events to continue to move, you know, forward with those events. Well, with Cassie only being able to work 10 hours a week, not because of her need or ability... Her ability is because we just don't have the funds to pay her more. So I guess the big ask tonight is, we need your help. If we want to continue on with the vision of the city, we need some help if you can. So we've provided the Main Street Salary for those towns that are in the performing and transforming level. So you have an idea of what other cities are putting towards their Main Street manager positions. You know, the board, just like, you know, we're volunteers. You know, I run a business, you know, I can work 78 hours a week and to try to put more time towards our downtown, of course, I'm gonna do it because it benefits me over time. So, but it's hard. So having someone, being able to spend more time, at least, you know, a part-time manager, which we really are supposed to be at transforming, we're supposed to be at a part-time manager, not 10 hours a week. So I guess my ask is to the council, if you would consider, we're looking for at least a minimum of $25,000 to keep Cassie with us and keep what we're doing moving forward in transforming.
I think this is a perfect thing to bring to the Budget Committee. I think this, but this helps us at least in advance just to see what you're talking about and I appreciate the numbers. I think that's very helpful.
Absolutely.
Really quick, how many board members do you have?
Currently, we have eight. Eight, we have, our board can accommodate 14, so we actually have created a board application that we're going to be handing out to folks that have actually come to us and ask, hey, I wanna be with you. I wanna join you.
Great, I think some of those, maybe having a full board could also possibly help alleviate some of those, those issues as well.
And more folks on our committees as well.
Correct, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to council?
Here we go.
My name is Gamal Nasser, they call me Mr. G. I live at 321 Tangent Street, which is on Fifth Street. I don't get that. But I wanted to thank Ms. Grizzle because I informed her about a situation that's going on at our stop sign on Tangent and Fifth Street. We've seen a lot of accidents, I have some video, we have cameras pointing to that corner. And with the monstrosity of the walk that's been there, that was placed there for the schools, children walking across the street and the lanes and the, all the artwork on the, on the ground, some of the cars that are coming there think that it's a complete four-way stop sign. This is what we believe. There's also a blind spot there, but I think that a simple sign that would say something along the lines of, this is not a four-way stop sign or oncoming traffic does not stop. And Ms. Grizzle put me in touch with somebody in the city, Mr. Ron Whitlatch, right away. I just wanted to thank you and hopefully that we can, when, help alleviate some of the accidents that are happening there. So I just wanna say thank you.
And I do think that was a good idea you came up with to be able to say cross-traffic does not stop.
Right.
I think that's a, that's really good so that the Tangent people don't, yeah, that's legitimate.
So I hope that works.
Have you seen a better traffic flow with that now?
Well, it's not there yet.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not there yet. We just started the conversation and I spoke with Mr. Whitlatch right away. He called me the next day and he said he was gonna start looking at it. And in one week, we saw two accidents and I've spoken to some of the people that are on that corner and even before that was there, that is a heavy accident area, which is why the crosswalk was put there. And we just moved there, we've been there a year. I can't say I've seen, you know, 12 accidents, but twice in one week and the folks that we have on video have actually stopped. They weren't, they didn't run a stop sign, they stopped and they still went and hit an oncoming car.
Okay.
Basically sight-swiped it and they just couldn't see it.
Expecting that they would stop too.
Probably so. That's, that, or maybe the blind spot, but I think at least that particular sign would alleviate the fact that they might not know.
City manager had a comment.
Yeah, the sign has been ordered, so...
Oh, awesome.
...as soon as it arrived.
Great, look forward to it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. G. Anyone else like to address council?
Mr. G inspired me and I should've done this earlier. Thank you for having better manners than me.
Thank you for getting those street signs with the solar panels and the speed limits. That has been wonderful and it has a marked improvement. I apologize for needing inspiration from someone with good manners. Thank you so much for making that happen. Thank you.
Good. Anyone else like to address council? Okay, seen then, we'll go into the regular session. Number one, the city's audit report. Matt Apken?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. As you guys just got the audit report, we may want to postpone this one till next month so you have a further chance to review. But we were able to complete the audit. There aren't really anything other than what Steve already said to bring to your attention, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or we can table it to next month.
I think it'd be good to have the month to be able to look at it and we can just delay it till next month and put it off for that. And I just think it'd be better because we need to look at this and we just got it today and it's quite...
I can't wait.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I wanna publicly express my appreciation to Matt and his staff. They've had a big, they had a big job this year to try to fix some things that, as the auditor said, weren't material but weren't being tracked in the best way. Matt's helping us become much more efficient and much more, I guess, transparent in how we're approaching our finances. But when you start making those kind of changes, then you get into the, all of what goes into making a change and it adds layers to what you do. But he's tackled it and I know he's had moments of frustration, so I wanted to take a moment to say thank you, Matt. Thank you to your staff. He's doing exactly what I hoped he would do when we hired him and I think we can expect only a lot more to come in the future. So thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good job.
So, oh, yeah.
I just reemphasized my question from earlier. Do you or Matt see any material changes in the policies and procedures?
I don't except for the, I don't know if it's a policy, but the issue of how many funds we have had, it's something we've dealt with since I've arrived. We have made some reductions, more are needed. With all that went into this year's audit and then jumping on the budget, I'm not sure that's an issue we're gonna be able to address in earnest this budget year. But Matt and I have talked and plan on the following budget year, a fairly extensive kind of streamlining of our budget. So that's the only, I mean, that's the big issue I see is there's too much complexity, which is one of the factors that takes so much time for our auditors compared to other cities. Cities much larger than us, you know, might have 20 to 30 funds. We have twice or more of that. And it's just because of old philosophies of how we would do our accounting, which I don't think is the best practice. I know Matt doesn't believe they're the best practice because they're not. We heard our auditor tonight say that, I don't know, was it a law or it's a policy at the state level, that we're supposed to have the least number of funds necessary to efficiently discharge the roles of our city. So that is the issue that I think we need to tackle, taking some time to get there because we're having to address some other issues from past practices, but we're going to get there.
How do the funds, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Sorry. How do the funds get reduced? So we have about 80, is my understanding from the previous presentation? Is that correct?
I think we have a total of, I believe it's 54 active funds.
Okay.
We have additional funds that are not active that were funds in the past that we've stopped using. But it's been pared down some.
How do you further reduce those, I guess is my end question?
Well, a lot of things. It depends on what it's for. We have probably five or six funds that specifically are related to parks. So instead of having five or six funds that are specifically related to parks, we can look at either having them all as part of the general fund in the Parks Department and then possibly having one capital fund outside of that, which has things that would stay there and roll year to year specifically for park projects. There's, I mean, we have a lot of special revenue funds as, is at least what we're calling them, that aren't true special revenue funds. Like, a special revenue fund should have an outside source of revenue that comes into the city. Many of our quote-unquote "special revenue funds" are funded by transfers from other departments within the city. So instead of them being a special revenue fund, they should be consolidated either back into the general fund. There's an option of maybe creating an internal service fund. But really just trying to make things go down to, you know, we're gonna have one fund for this or it's gonna be part of the general fund. I know I've talked with various department directors about, okay, what you kind of control, does it make sense if we brought that down further? And most of them have agreed, you know, as long as there's a way to track this, then that would be fine, which there's ways to track it, it's...
Without creating a new fund?
Just not the way that we're currently set up. And so we need to do some adjustments there and I honestly thought this process of the audit was gonna end probably two months ago and I'd have a lot more time to kinda do some of these... months ago, and I'd have a lot more time to kind of do some of these adjustments in this current budget, but it's been a long, drawn-out process to make sure that things are correct in this audit. Felt if I'm spending the time to get a good portion of it there, I might as well spend the time to try and get the whole thing there. Unfortunately, there will still be some other changes that have to happen, but...
Robert?
Well, and just from looking at cost centers versus funds, is a way to get the detail that you're looking for.
Yep.
Doesn't require a separate fund, but it still provides the accounting detail within the budget. So, you can have multiple cost centers, have the reporting detail necessary for the manager.
And to do that, we'd have to, we'd have to change our accounting codes, to make it so we could fit one of those in. So, that's just another thing that, to do that takes time, you got to go through the proper steps to make sure that you know where you're currently at, you know what you're going to, and then have a crosswalk between the two, so that way, next year, when somebody asks, "Well, how did this go from this to this?", I can explain it to them in a way that they're not like, "Did you just make that number up?" No, it was here in this fund, but now it's moved over into this fund in this department, and it's combined with this other...
Is hiring the accounting firm that we use to help in that process an option? I mean, of course, it would cost more money, but to engage them to say, "Here is how we could see this doing that," is it just something you guys would prefer to control?
I would defer to Matt if he believes in his judgment that would help, he's not approached me with that yet, so Matt, what say you?
I don't know that, if we were going to hire a consultant, I don't know that it would be our accounting firm, for a couple different reasons. One, because there are auditors, you usually want to keep your auditors separated from consulting services. Two, most auditors that don't have consulting experience aren't going to know the details of putting together a budget. I know that was one of the things I learned really quickly last year, is while I've reviewed budgets many times, it's a lot different reviewing budgets and understanding them that way versus putting a budget together, and unfortunately, most of this happens through the budget process, that's how you get rid of funds, combining them with other funds. It's the easiest way. You can do it through other resolutions throughout the year, but kind of easy to do during the budget.
Could you bring to council a cost analysis on what that help might do, cost-wise and beneficial in terms of getting the end goal?
Unless that takes too much time, I mean, to do a cost analysis on somebody helping us cost-analyze, I don't know, it may not be the right time for you to go through a bunch of work just to satisfy us that you don't need more help.
And I can't guarantee you at this time, I know kind of what we want to do, so that would be hard to also give you a cost estimate on what it would be, when, I feel like, with the department directors, we need to discuss more how we think this could kind of come down to a smaller group, and then once we determine that, would kind of give me an idea of, okay, is this going to be something that we need to bring somebody in to help get us there?
Yeah, I would just say, I, for my part, feel like I would be open to that, if you could find some really smart retired dude from another city, who we could hire for six months to just come in and, you know, part-time and help you say, "Oh, no, I know exactly," somebody who has a budget, who's been through a budget, that we kind of want to, our budget to reflect or mirror the style, so I would just be open to that, if you come to that point in your process and think.
Yeah, I think you and Gary working through it, and, you know, if it gets to that point, then we could do something like that, but if not, it almost seems like something that you should be able to do in-house, it's just going to be a lot of work. Really appreciate all the work that you've done on this, and I know it's been difficult for you, and I appreciate it. Is there any other questions? With that, I will accept a motion to postpone to the May meeting for the city's 2018 audit report.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone to the next May meeting of the city's audit report. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, the motion passes, and we will postpone to May. Thank you, Matt. And next up, renewal of Municipal Court Judge Waite's agreement, and Matt Apken, Finance Director.
Hello again, Mayor and City Council members.
Long time no see.
I think there was some confusion about whether or not we should have a memo with this, so unfortunately, we didn't get one put together, but the Judge Waite's contract expires at the end of June, and we wanted to get this contract renewed. He has not requested an increase, and it's a two-year contract, so I didn't think there was much to bring to you in the way of any changes, but it would be my recommendation that unless you have anything else...
Any questions? Judge Waite is here, thank you for coming tonight, Judge, good to see you.
I've sat through a few of his trials, and I really appreciate the work that you're doing here, I really, and I do hear word on the work that you're doing, so thank you.
Yeah, it is, and I've heard from our attorney's office, and we get very good reports, so we appreciate that, thank you.
Move the contract approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to renew the Municipal Court Judge Waite's agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Thank you, Matt, thank you, Judge Waite. City Manager Report, Gary Marks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my report is in the packet. The subject I'd like to focus my time on tonight is the fact that after years and years of effort yesterday, the city began utilizing its new water treatment plant to actually put water into the public system.
Yay.
The old, the old plant is now turned off for the first time in 72 years, so, so far, so good. When you, when you switch plants from one to the other, because the plants utilize different processes, you can get complaints from the public about, there's a change in the taste, there's a change in maybe perceived odors, so we're always on the lookout for that, in fact, our crews were out flushing out some of the hydrants yesterday to try to avoid any stale water in the, in the system, as we infused it with the new. So, we began filling our reservoirs yesterday, so far, we've received no comments, one way or the other, from the public, and so, so far, I take that as a good indication, but wanted to make you aware that after years of a lot of effort from the city council, from a number of the departments at the city, and a lot of help from our partners at the state level, we finally have a new water treatment plant, and it's serving our public, so just wanted to highlight that. If there's any other comments on the City Manager Report, I'd be happy to respond to those.
A question, it's probably a Ron question, but I was just curious, maybe you know, how long does it take for that water, that new water, to get to our houses? I'm sure it depends on what our water usage is, but I was just kind of curious, it could be a couple days?
Yeah, it depends on what the level was in the reservoirs at the time...
Okay.
...that the new water was introduced, and I know that we can drain, we can drain the reservoirs in the matter of just a few days.
Okay.
And maybe faster in the summertime, so, you know, I'm not an expert on that, but I believe it's probably just a day or two, depending on usage.
Any other comments?
That's pretty bad.
It's exciting to see, that was a great tour, the staff put on fantastic tour, and it was very educational.
Which, by the way, thank you, I'll mention that we have offered to the public, public tours of the new facility, it's scheduled for, I believe it's the 16th of this month, we had two different sessions that we offered, I believe those are mostly full, but we will be pushing out other dates in the future, probably over the next six months at least, so that the public who is interested will have the chance to get in there and understand what it is that we've built, and why it's important to the community. And also, I should say, to add to all of this, is that first time in 72 years, we're drawing our water directly from the river, not from the canal. That's a very significant achievement for us, in that we were always having to be respondent to another community for our water needs, and now we're independent, and that's always a good thing for any community to have independence in that area.
Any other questions for Gary? Okay, seen then, items from council, we have trees and trail update on the committee, Councilor Grizzle.
Yeah, well, our full minutes of the January meeting are in your packet, but the most recent meeting we had, we're updating the trails and trees, what do I want to say, Linda, the procedures, the handbook, and we went over mostly what kind of trees are acceptable trees in the public right of way, and a large part of that is because of the tree situation downtown, and needing to replace those trees downtown, and what trees would be appropriate, so we really kind of rehashed quite a few of those, and I believe at this point, we've chosen some trees, and are going to be presenting to the Downtown Association to kind of get some input from them. You did get that? Okay, good. So, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Excellent. Any other items from council?
Question for Rebecca, when will they be taking out those trees?
That is not a good question for Rebecca. Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't know the timeline.
It depends on how our process goes, but possibly in the coming several months.
We going to communicate that out before they come out?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I should, I should mention too, that this is all predicated on, on an analysis that we had done by a qualified arborist to analyze the health of the trees. There are several of them that have issues that really aren't addressable, so at some point, they need to be replaced, and we'd rather get those replaced, if we're also talking about, and we are, holiday lights in the trees, and when you, when you do that, you have to, we're going to have to put in new conduit under the sidewalks, you're going to disrupt the root areas for those trees, so the time to install the electricity for holiday lights for trees is the same time that we take the old trees out. So, we're trying to pull all those pieces together and make it work, and we want to get it done this year.
And my understanding is that generally, when you have a situation like our downtown trees, you kind of expect a 15-year replacement, I mean, the trees cannot be allowed to become fully grown, you know, you get trees that are, kind of keep themselves dwarfed a little bit, but you cannot also have very large, very tall, very wide trees in a, in a business situation, there's a lot of things that go wrong there, so it's time.
Good. Jason, I would like to see if you would like to do an update on your committee.
I have that waiting to go.
Perfect, thank you.
So, just an update on the Ralston Park Improvement Committee, we started meeting in January, and have met pretty much monthly, all the way through April, so, yeah, four meetings in total, and those, that committee's made up of myself, the city manager, or no, myself, Ron Whitlatch, Jason Williams, from City Departments, and then some residents, business owners, et cetera, from the community that live within a, I think it was a four-block area there. So, started off kind of just introducing things and getting to know the landscape architects, and then we went down this path of kind of visioning what we wanted to see for this park, and I must say that the architects did a great job of guiding us through that process, and getting us to a point where we could see what was feasible, what was not feasible, what was going to add value to the park for different groups, how it was going to be more accessible, how it was going to be better lit and safer, and these are all the highlights of that, and offer more to our public. And so, in the end, pretty much the end, we've come up with conceptual design that they presented to us at our last meeting, and I got to say, it is amazing, and it will be definitely a phased approach to construction and development, but it is a beautiful, beautiful transition that has, maintains a lot of the park's history and current culture, the garden club, the gazebo, things like that, the Christmas tree aspect of that park, and then it also incorporates a lot of new, modern things, like an updated performance area, kind of a flag plaza or veterans' plaza area, a splash pad, updated bathrooms, things of that nature, so really moving in a positive direction, and I think they're going to come in May and present that next meeting.
Did I see the idea of a bridge also going over the water?
There's a bridge in the design that connects the two sides of the park, that was a big component of that for the community, because they felt that the east side was pretty much unused, and so, and everything is accessible in there as well, which is great. So, it's exciting, be at the May meeting, it's, you're going to be blown away when you see this thing, and when they show you the 3D renderings and the fly-through, kind of like we had for Strawberry Plaza, sorry, Mayor, it's going to blow away Strawberry Plaza.
That's fine with me.
There's a new, there's a new great pet project in town, it's going to be that, but it's fantastic, so you'll really enjoy that.
Are they going to be at our May council meeting, we're going to see it?
Coming to the May council meeting, yes.
Awesome, great, good. Any questions? Thanks, Jason, for that report. Anything else from council? Okay, we have another opportunity for public comments, anybody would like to speak to council? Going, going, gone, okay. Items from press, you're good. Next scheduled council meeting is May 8th, regular session, 6:00 PM. We have noon budget committee meetings, May 16th, 17th, we all look forward to that.
Yes.
And hopefully, Matt does such a great job like he always does, that it's only the one day, but we'll see, we'll see how it goes this year. And then June 12th, we have the regular session. With that, we are adjourned.